Good afternoon. I'd like to open up our Commissioner's staff meeting of March the 8th. If you could please introduce yourselves, that would be great.
Communications Manager, Brittany Clark.
County Commissioner, Alicia Reese.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Mike Freeman, Councilman.
Thank you, and I am Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, President of the Board. Welcome, everyone who's here. We will get started, and our first item on the agenda is our Enterprise Zone Agreement. Harry Blanton is here to speak. Hi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
And thank you. Yes, I'm Harry Blanton from HDC. We have a group of folks here today for this Enterprise Zone. To my left is Ashley Keith, who's a new employee of HDC. We also have Glenn Wiley, who's the General Manager of Unilock, and then Tom Losikamp, who is a trustee with Harrison Township. So before you today, we have an Enterprise Zone Agreement for your consideration with Unilock, and Unilock is proposing to invest $50 million in a project that will include the construction of a 95,000-square-foot manufacturing and distribution facility in Harrison Township. The new investment will add 33 new jobs with an average salary of $57,000. And so Harrison Township has already passed a resolution in support of this, and both the Great Oaks Schools and the Southwest Local School Districts have not presented any objections to it. The recommendation is for a 60% tax incentive for 10 years through the Enterprise Zone, and I'm going to invite up Glenn Wiley, who's the General Manager, to give more information about the project.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name's Glenn Wiley. As Harry indicated, I'm the General Manager at Unilock Ohio, have been for the last 20 years after taking a leave from my job in Toronto and coming to run our operation in Ohio. Unilock is originally a Canadian company founded in 1972. We're actually the first company that introduced this type of product into North America: paving stones, retaining walls, residential commercial projects for landscape and commercial projects. After our roots in Toronto, we expanded into primarily the Great Lakes region with operations in Detroit, Chicago, as you can see, Cleveland, hopefully here in Cincinnati, New York, Boston, and our roots in Toronto. Unilock Ohio was founded in 1998, really began our first full year of operation in 2000 after we built the plant in 98 and it was commissioned. Currently, we have 67 employees in our operation in Northeast Ohio. Currently, in Harrison, we have a 5,500-square-foot building that we built in 2019. It's basically an office and a showroom. We just run a small distribution facility out of there with two employees. Basically, we manufacture our products in Northeast Ohio. We transfer them here to satisfy sales here in the local community. Those two jobs, as Harry indicated, average salary is about $57,000. So those two employees, customer service, yard personnel, approximately $100,000. Big plans for the site. The site, as you can see on the bottom photo there, is 20 acres. We've got approximately six acres that have been developed, which is, as I said, indicated, just a small storage area right now, but our plans are to build a 95,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. 20 million of that is the building and associated construction. $30 million of it is everything inside of the building for the plant machinery and equipment. It's a highly automated facility, very much a state-of-the-art. It'll be perhaps the best in our fleet of companies across, or fleet of manufacturing sites across our company. And in the first three years, we anticipate we'll be at a total of 35 jobs with a payroll of approximately $2 million. So as Harry indicated, we are applying for the tax abatement of 60% over 10 years, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has at this point.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Just a couple comments. As I was looking at this summary, I think it's from Harry, you had two full-time employees, as you mentioned, and that will increase to 33 full-time, which is great, and the payroll from $100,000 to almost $2 million. That's great. I think your, Unilock has a more reasonable request than we normally get. I think it's a reasonable request of 60% in 10 years, so I'm real happy to hear that. Those are the only comments that I have at this time. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, and it's good to know where this design is coming from. Seen a lot of this. Wonderful. Yeah, I would agree that definitely will support this resolution. I like the increase of jobs, certainly the area that you're in. So yeah, I support this. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for being here. Thank you also, Harry, and others for being here. I've got two questions. One is related to the community. So I assume that you've had the meetings with the community and they are supportive of the project?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't know if Harry said that. Was there a public hearing related to this, or?
Well, we have Mr. Tom Losikamp here from the Village of Harrison.
Oh, very good.
He is in support of the project.
Okay. I would, thank you. I appreciate that. The other question I have is related to the footprint. So the map that I'm looking at that you provided looks like there's a lot of room to grow, perhaps. There's a lot of space out in Harrison, as we all know. Is there any plan to expand beyond what you're proposing now, maybe in the future, as you realize how wonderful being in Hamilton County is at this expanded version? You know, it looks like there's lots and lots of room to grow.
Yeah, the building, as I indicated, is 95,000 square feet, so it'll go on the backside of the, sort of the red dot that indicates where the existing facility is. A great deal of the land will be used for the storage of our materials, but when we went through original site plan approval a few years back, there was plans to have a second facility, manufacturing facility on that same site, yes.
Okay. And how does this facility compare with your other operations and the footprint of the other operations in the states?
This one is significantly larger, and that is simply due to the advancement of the technologies for the equipment that we put in. Having been in the industry for 30 years, just what I've seen over those 30 years is incredible. We've got a lot of our technology from our European partners, and it's some of the things that we do. Once we manufacture concrete, then we put a variety of different finishes and textures and things that we apply to the product, which requires a larger footprint and more equipment.
Okay, great. Thank you for that information. And Madam President, I would ask that the other gentleman be allowed to speak as well.
Well, I was getting ready. That's what I was just getting ready to do.
Thank you.
The trustee from Harrison Township, if he would like to come forward.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Hi. So do you have questions, or? We started this project with Unilock, I think back initially, I think first conversation we had with them was like 2016, 2017. Then we had, they came into our jet in 2019. That's when they started their, that's when we had our public hearings, when they started their office building, and that's when they laid out the plans to put the manufacturing in. I think the pandemic got in the way a little bit because they were planned on 2021, but now we're, I mean, we're close, just a year. Let's not ask too much for what happened in the past.
So just wanted to hear your level of support.
Oh, yeah, I like this.
To make sure he wasn't making it up or anything.
No, no, no. I like this company because he's been forthright with us, I think. Everything, I believe everything he's telling us is the truth. And when they did ask for the 60%, they weren't going over the top. Anything else, they were asking for that, and we were more than happy, and just based on what Harry told us, too. We were fine with that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for the trustee?
No questions. I thank you for being here today. I just would say, when we are, for clerk purposes, you did pass the resolution. I know it's in here, and I think if we had a copy of that resolution, so it's in the records as well, as we're putting forward the resolution for passage, I think that would be great.
Thank you. So Harry normally brings it to us, sends it to us, so we'll make sure that happens.
Because, yeah, HDC, they should have had it, so.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. Harry, do you have any final words?
Well, can I, I just wanted to thank the gentleman for coming here from Harrison. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
No, we appreciate your comments, Commissioners. If there are any more questions, we'd be happy to answer them, but thank you for your time, and we'll.
Sounds like we're in support, and we'll wait for that resolution that you'll send forward.
Thank you.
So thank you so much. Okay.
Madam President, might I ask a question? So we recently received information from the administration, I guess, or HCDC, related to TIFs, CRAs, you know, all the economic development incentives that we are able to provide, and it was kind of an overview of all of them. I thought that's what this meeting was about, frankly. So I'm wondering, is that coming up to a staff meeting? Are we going to have that scheduled?
Well, actually, I meet with Jeff normally on Mondays, and so I deferred it to a Wednesday, so I could better read the information that was given to me, and certainly we can bring it forward in a staff meeting.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Director Patton, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Welcome. Thank you for having me this afternoon. I'm here to give you an update on where things stand with our Emergency Rent Utility Assistance Program. About a month ago, I came before the board and we talked about the fact that we had a backlog of applications for rent utility assistance at the time, was a little over 2,700 applications. Since that time, the team has really been working diligently at making dispositions on those applications, and so wanted to make sure that, acknowledge the work that the team did so far at getting the applications down to where they are. As you'll see on the slide here, so far, we have served 6,725 families with the funding that we receive for the Emergency Rent Utility Program, and then also, so far, we've spent a total of 20, just under $27 million of the original $36 million that was allocated to us. So these are, as it stands, the balance left on the ERAP II funds that we are currently expending. So we have just under $10,000 remaining on our ERAP II budget, which is what we're. 10 million, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting that. 10 million, yeah. A little bit more than 10,000.
Oh, we're running out of money.
$10 million left on the original ERAP fund that we currently have. Want to point to, in the middle of the graph there, for ERAP II funding that we have, if we were to go on pace based on what we currently have in the pipeline, we anticipate that that funding would be exhausted by the 1st of May. The good news is, is that we are aware of some additional state funding, some state money from the ARPA I dollars that we, we reached out to see whether or not we would be interested in accepting some additional funding to spend here on the program. We've had conversations with the state, and $5 million is available for us to take advantage of here locally going forward. And so what you have here is that we are proposing that, and we need the board to accept that and for us to be appropriated, those funds to move forward. But we're proposing that we accept that $5 million and begin spending that immediately on the existing applications going forward, and the reason for that is because those dollars, ARPA I dollars, they expire in September. The money that we're spending here locally on the ARPA II dollars have a longer period of time before they expire, so we'd like to front-load that $5 million now and begin spending that immediately, and move the ERAP II dollars that we currently have, which is the $10 million, and use that for when the $5 million of the original, of the ARPA I dollars runs out. In addition to that, however, based on what we've seen so far related to eligibility, we're proposing that, in order for us to be able to do this in a fair and equitable way and to ensure that we don't increase backlogs, which is what we've seen over the last year or so related to the number of applications that we've received, is that we look at those who have current disconnection and eviction notices to process immediately. Those would be people who we would continue to look at in the pipeline, but also new applicants for ERAP dollars that have existing eviction notices, utility shut-off notices. And we would also propose that we would limit that to paying for utilities and rent six months in arrears and nothing going forward. The current rule is that we would pay for 12 months in arrears and six months going forward. The reason that we think that's important is because we want to make sure that we are being able to address those that are having immediate need. There are some folks that we know of that have had claims up until this point where they've received multiple opportunities to take advantage of the benefit, and I think that if the need is there, that's absolutely appropriate, but we want to make sure that we're targeting those that are most in need going forward, and also to make sure that we have an opportunity to really look at those carefully, and if that condition exists, we were able to help beyond just May. So we want to make sure we extend that as long as we can if the funding is available. So the impact of those would be an improved ability to issue the benefit timely, which is, you've noticed, we've had a backlog here lately. That's what the narrowing of the eligibility we think will do. It also allows the existing backlog to be resolved and avoids future backlogs. I would just preface that, I wouldn't say avoid future backlogs, because it's hard to anticipate what the volume might be going forward, particularly as we get back out in the community. 513 relief picks back up, so the anticipated volume is something that is difficult to predict. But the goal is to try to make sure that we don't create a situation where we have a backlog, where we can't get to it immediately and address the emerging problem. It also helps establish a baseline going forward for us if we were to start the $5 million April 1st to give us really a better indication of what that volume might look like going forward, so that we can better manage the staff and the volume that we might run into out in the community. So that's where things stand. Really here to gain your support for the recommendations, and I believe the vote on this would need to happen Thursday, I would think, in terms of accepting the additional $5 million. If we don't accept the $5 million, we are anticipating that the current expenditures that we have, based on the current criteria that we're using, would be exhausted by early May, early to mid-May.
Thank you so much.
Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, thanks. You said a lot of things. So as JFS, and I said he's the director, he's the director of JFS. I didn't say that, but your partners, who's helping with this initiative to get the monies out? Are you working with CAA still?
Well, CAA, and I should have mentioned that earlier, actually, at the top, CAA is responsible for administering the city and the state funding, so they're still doing their part of that. We've accepted some additional state dollars in the neighborhood of $5 million, which is what we're proposing, to do that independent and with the staffing that we have. We believe that we are staffed up to be able to administer that in an efficient way.
And that was my question, Mr. Patton, is do you need more partners? I know you guys are doing all you can do. CAA is also, but there's so many in the gap. Either they don't know about it, I don't know how, because we've been trying to let everybody know, but I mean, I just left, I just got an email, a desperate email. So we know some of them fall in the gap. How do we reach more people and expedite the process even quicker? That's a question that I have. I don't really have the answer, but if there are other agencies, like, I don't know, Talbert House have been doing it for a while, I'm just suggesting, maybe, and not suggesting that you guys are not doing all you can do, because I know better than that. You mentioned the ARPA I and the $5 million. I certainly would be in support of that. My understanding, the state, if we don't, once we get it, whoever's gotten it, and don't use it quick enough, they disperse it within the state, and we don't want that to happen because the need is still there, for sure. You were going to say something.
No, I'm glad you brought that up. That was a part of our calculus, too, when we made the decision on the amount that we think we could administer responsibly. So we took a look at what we were seeing on the ground and thought about how we could do that in a responsible way, and so that is where we came up with the $5 million, because we want to make sure that if we accept it, we are able to distribute it in an efficient way, in an untimely way, so that it gets to the folks who need it the most.
So I think we need to take advantage of that, and I'm certainly willing to vote on that on Thursday. So I will.
Thank you.
Open it up for any questions or comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I do have a lot of questions, comments, and just following up on some of the things that President Dumas said in terms of making sure there's still a lot of need. I just want to be clear on that. The need, as it relates to COVID and what it has done economically, is not over. Many people are just feeling the hit. We've got inflation, we've got gas up to $40. We've got Duke Energy, the bills have gone up. They've told us that they got approved to increase. So people's bills are, some of them are doubling, and so the hit is just now hitting people who are making money, but the money is going to be going fast. Rent is up. Everything is up, except your paycheck. So I believe that every dollar, this is a once-in-a-lifetime, that the government, for the first time in at least my lifetime, I've never seen the federal government bail out the people. They've always bailed out industries. Bail out the banking industry, bail out the auto industry, but never the people. And so this is a once-in-a-lifetime, and one reason I want to say that you guys are doing a good job, the reason we're getting the money is because Hamilton County, under Jobs and Family Services, has done a good job of getting the money out. So number one, I support the federal guidelines. I don't support us putting extra on the federal guidelines. So if the federal says that you can do back pay and ahead of pay, I believe that that's what we should do. I don't believe that we should be putting additional barriers or cutting back on our citizens when everybody else in the world, they, in other states, they're getting their fair share. This is a once-in-a-lifetime, we can get our fair share. And so I don't want to pay people's back rent and the government says you could do three, reason why they said three months ahead, so you don't get in this bind again. To be perfectly honest, we have moved sometimes in a slow manner. So by the time you approve for three months, now you six months behind by the time the check makes it to your landlord. So I want us to think very real, and as a board, we have taken a bold step as a board. We've put more people in the budget. We've put money for technology that we have, this Google that I, you know, that's, you got Google now. We're looking for something to be like TurboTax, where you go in there, you do it on your phone, it says, boom, approved, and somehow the money gets right to it. I have gotten calls from Amy Spiller, who is the president of Duke Energy in this area, who has said that there still is a major backlog, and they don't want to be cutting people off, but they will be cutting people off. So, and as you go into the fall months, you might get away with it in the, now we're coming out of the winter, they will cut you off. So I wanted to just take a moment, Madam President, Commissioner Dreehouse, because I think we, I want to make sure the people that are watching understand that there's Community Action Agency, and yes, they say Hamilton County Community Action Agency, but they are an independent board, is not overseen by our board. Then you have Jobs and Family Services that we oversee as a board. So some people have done applications through Community Action Agency, and maybe they have a big backlog from what I hear, but we are not in charge of them. We don't oversee them, and we have not given our money to them. And then you have Jobs and Family Services, which we do oversee, and so I wanted to make sure people understood Community Action Agency gets their money from the state of Ohio and from the city of Cincinnati. And so if there's issues with that, you probably have to go to your state representatives, your state senators, and your city council and mayor of Cincinnati. They handle that portion. Now, if you did an application on our portion, Jobs and Family Services, then we can make a call to our director who is standing here. So today, I have, one, I want to know, is five, did we recommend $5 million? Or was there other money we could have got from the state?
There was much, there was more money. There was $100 million that was available, that was offered to multiple counties throughout the state who had spent at least 65% of their initial allocation. So after talking with the team about what we felt like we could do responsibly without creating a backlog, making sure that if there was an eviction notice, it was addressed immediately, or an eviction notice, it was addressed immediately, our goal is to try to stay within 10 working days of a disposition, and we were not able to do that previously. So after having those conversations, we made the decision that we felt like $5 million was the amount that we believe we could administer to the community in a responsible way, in a timely way, to prevent backlogs, to prevent complaint calls and those kinds of things. So that is, that is the number and how we came up with the number of $5 million.
Okay. So that would give us a total of only $15 million, but we had over $100 million. What is the need? Have you researched the need?
The need is not determined.
Not the need from your office?
No, the need, the need in the community, the need in the community is based on what we've seen over the last year or so with respect to the applications that have been submitted. So I don't have that number today to share with you, but I know the need is there. We've been in the community administering the program for over a year, so the need has been demonstrated, and I think the need is great.
Well, I'd like to know the number of the need, because one of the things that I'm really focused on is bringing as many resources back to Hamilton County as possible to reduce the burden on the taxpayers. See, if we only get $5 million, and then we got $10 million, and then the need is, I don't know, $30 million hypothetically, now we got to go get a levy. Now the local taxpayer got to pay for it. I don't, I want to reduce the burden on the local taxpayer. If we got this Washington money that's coming by way of Ohio, get that money, not hold up, and then later on, you say, oh, I gotta get a, we gotta go up on the levy and the local people. We're trying to reduce the tax burden on the local folks, bring in outside money to help, help our people. So I'd like to know, not just, well, you know, as President Dumas even said, maybe there's some partnerships. I want to know the need. I don't want to come in here and we got five, well, we gonna take $5 million and we can get it out in five months. I guess it'll be about five months. And then we only got $10 million and we'll be done. So now, but the need is $30 million, and now we need a tax levy. Now we got to go out and get the taxpayers to up the. And now we need a tax levy. Now we got to go out and get the taxpayers to up the taxes. We don't want that. If we can pay for these things on this once in a lifetime opportunity, I would like to know what that maximum number based on need, even if we have to, as President Dumas said, even if we got to partner. But I want to get the maximum we can get for the need of what the people really need. That's one thing. The other thing is, I'd like to know, what is the backlog number now?
As of today, it's under 200.
That's really good.
So we are at a point where, as we get new applications, the other thing that I've asked to get some information on is the rate of applicants, new applicants that we've gotten over the last few months. And we are, we were getting about 80 applications a day through the system, through the, through the Google application. That's been cut in half, so we're getting about 40 a day. So where we stand now, I feel comfortable with, with our ability to be responsive with respect to that. And so that's where the backlog stands as of today. It says 335, but I've gotten some more updated numbers since I've come to you today. So we're under 200 at this point.
Well, I want to compliment you on that, but I'll tell you why your number of applications is down. We took a break. We not advertising. There's no 513 relief bus out there. So yeah, you probably are down to 40 people, because we done shut it, almost shut the operation down. And now, only way people can know about it is if they know to get on 513 relief, if they know to call your phone, or however that's going, or whatever that rate of answering the phone is happening. The bus is not out there. The advertising is not out there. We kind of went underground to catch up on the backlog. But the spring is happening. Next month is Minority Health Month. Spring is happening. People are out there. We also are coming into a time when the shed-offs will now resume. We're not in the winter season anymore. So, you know, just being realistic, we getting ready to get hit with some folks. Hopefully, the bus will be back out, I'm hoping. Hopefully, we'll be marketing as we normally have, and I think the need is going to be great. So for me, I like to, before I just agreed to $5 million, I like to get, maybe all of us, it'd be great if we could get, what is that need? Let's look at realistically, we getting ready to get back from underground to above ground. And if there are other partners that we need to, partner that can handle it, can we do that? What about these new people that we done put on the books in our budget? Let's try for the maximum versus going for the minimum, because I think the need is just really a lot greater. I mean, I've been out there. I've been seeing them. I see their faces. I've been to 74, the 78 locations. That's just with the bus. I mean, people crying, people can't make it. So if we can do something more, I'd like for us to at least have that opportunity to take a look at it. So those are my comments, Madam President and Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just want to make a point of clarification. What is available to us at this point is $5 million. So that is what, that's the maximum we can get now. What I do believe may happen, and I can't guarantee this, is that there may be an opportunity later in the year for us to do something similar, depending on how those ARPA 1 dollars are expended with the state and the federal through the other organizations who are responsible for that. So there's still an opportunity, I believe, that may come later down the road this year for us to be offered an opportunity to do the same thing we're doing now. But as of right now, the amount that's available is $5 million.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that, because I got something different. When we were, I had, when I had a meeting with Kevin Holt, they said, you guys recommended $5 million.
We did, we did. We recommended initially.
So you said the maximum we got, now is that what, is the state saying this?
It was recommended. It was recommended that we take $5 million.
By who?
By us, to the state. And as we began to talk about the amount, we asked again, so where do things stand? And we received communication that $5 million was, all that was available now. So that's where the, that's where we are. $5 million is what's available now. But we initially recommended $5 million. The thought was that we may be able to draw down more. That is not, that's not the case at this moment.
So you asked for the maximum of what we could have.
We asked for the maximum, what we believe we could administer, without creating a backlog, without creating a situation where we could not respond immediately to what the need is in the applications.
That's a little different, though. So it's $5 million, the maximum we could ask for, or was $5 million?
It was not the maximum we could ask for. We could have asked for more than that.
Okay. So, and you were saying, it could be a possibility, if we end up using 4.5 million, that there's a possibility that we could reapply for more.
The state offered it to us based on the lack of expenditures that occurred previously with the ARPA 1 dollars. It's possible that that offer could come again.
Okay.
Madam President, if I just briefly, just in terms of some clarification, also just wanted to let the board know that these are, I believe, ARPA 1 dollars or from, or ERAP 1 dollars from the state. So there is a timeline for the spend on that of September as well, which I think is, also relates to JFS's determination as to what they could get out, given the amount of dollars that we currently have. And I think what Michael was saying was that the hope is that, given where the state is on their expenditures, that they'll be coming out with some ERAP 2 dollars as well for the same, the same type of give back to some of the local communities as well.
Madam President, can I just ask the, I just want to make sure we, because I, you know, all of us, I know we all share trying to get the maximum. We have, I just don't want us going in low, lowballing ourselves, lowballing the taxpayers. Number one, we cut the number of dollars by saying that we want to, on ourselves. Now, President Joe Biden and them said, you can pay back rent and three months ahead of time. This was the federal money that we're talking about. We're coming back ourselves, not other counties. We come back ourselves saying, we want to cut that. One, we only want to focus on people who have a disconnection or a shut-off notice.
And eviction, and eviction as well.
But the law does not say we have to just do that. Does that cut your money down? Then we come back saying, we only want to cover six months prior rent and utility. We cut ourselves down. So yeah, I mean, what I don't want is, I don't want, you know, all these other counties getting all the money, and we done cut ourselves down. You go to another county and they can do more than six months. You go to another county, they can do back rent and rent ahead of time. You go to another county, and they're spending more money than us. I, I just, I disagree. If we paying, if we use the same laws that the federal government is giving us, I think we can get out $10 million, close to it. Because the gas and electric bills are going to be higher. We know that if you're paying rent in the future, you're able to add to that. So I just want to make sure, you know, like you just said, we got less people applying, because we're not out there. We got less people calling, because we not advertising. I don't want it where we're self-imposing ourselves to make people go underground and not have the help. I just want to say, I want the maximum. If I'm a taxpayer, I want the maximum coming to Hamilton County. And like you said, if you don't spend it, what do you get? You take, give it back to the state, which we won't do. But I'm just saying, I don't see why we're, you know, just lowballing ourselves on this. So that, I just wanted to put that out there, Madam President. That's my concern. We're one of the counties in the whole state that's doing one of the best jobs of getting the money to the people. And I just, I just think that we should be pushing a little bit further. So that's, I do want to put that on record, because I know that the need is great. All of us are getting calls, I'm sure, and seeing people that need help.
Thank you. And I know there's been lots of discussion between yourself and the administrator. You did mention earlier about September was the date, and also not wanting to have another backlog. But, so I, as a director, I'm sure you've looked at your staff and what you can do and not do. And so I trust that decision that you guys have made as far as getting that money out and knowing that possibly we can get more money, for sure. But Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Director, for being here, and thank you to your team. I mean, we've all mentioned it, just the phenomenal job that JFS has done getting this money out. When you look at these numbers, it's really impressive. $26 million is a lot of money to get out into the community. So thank you for that. I'm impressed with the, I was going to ask the same question about the current backlog. So 200 is manageable. I'm delighted to hear it. We are getting tons of calls in our office as well about folks not being able to connect or unclear about the wait time. So I'm glad that we're close to the end of that backlog. That's good news. And I was also going to note that when I look at the charts, the backlog processing is way down from where we were not too long ago. And the claims paid are also down. So these two things, like, from my view, kind of work in opposite of one another. So if the claims paid are down and the backlog's down, that means we're starting to level out here a little bit, and that helps you better understand what the need is. And I'm curious about this number two, about the need, because really, in the end, that's what we're talking about. You know, it's, is the need going to continue to be what we've seen in the past? Or is it going to level off somewhere down here where, and I guess these are the calculations you guys are doing internally, and then we start to figure out how much money? Because one of my questions was, how much money do we feel is necessary through, I guess, the term of rental assistance or in utility assistance? You know, this is something that we've had the ability to offer because of the federal dollars and now state dollars through the feds. But I just don't have a clear concept, and I'm not sure any of us do, as to what the future holds here, which begs these questions, you know, about these amounts. So can you help us, and it folds into the amount that you requested from the state. Can you help us better understand your thinking behind kind of the, what we're seeing on the horizon related to this money and what the need actually is going to be?
I think part of our calculus also had to do with thinking about the eligibility criteria, and I think that's something we can certainly have a conversation about. But if we were able to take advantage of the ARPA 1 dollars, the $5 million immediately, start either with the existing eligibility or the same eligibility, knowing that we're coming out, as Commissioner Reese mentioned, back out into the community, having a better understanding of what the volume might look like, taking that opportunity during the month of April to really gauge and to figure out exactly what we anticipate that need might look like, given the difference in the economy, difference in COVID, those kinds of, those kinds of factors playing into how we might move forward with, with processing those applications and what that might do in terms of staffing and resources, and what we would need to adjust, if necessary, to make sure that we were able to do that in a timely fashion. So we, the goal here is to really look at the month of April to take advantage of the new sort of reality of what we're seeing in terms of applications, claims, the reality of potential additional folks coming out in the community to apply for the benefit and making, having an understanding of what that volume looks like going forward and making adjustments based on what we see on the ground.
So is it fair to say, then, that the $5 million that you get from the state, which has to be spent more quickly than the $10 million that is left still from the county funding? So the $10 million will be set to the side?
Correct.
Okay, and so the $5 million will be the immediate need money? And to Commissioner Reese's point, is there any harm in, instead of going to the $5 million, I understand the reason for the calculation, but going a little over that? And if we cannot expend the money by September, is there any penalty or any harm in having asked for a little bit more optimistically, thinking that we might be able to get some of that out, and then not doing it?
There is no, there is no harm. There is no risk. But, but what I want to be clear about is that the opportunity for asking for more is not, it doesn't exist anymore. So we've asked for $5 million. We've been told that $5 million is what is available for us to draw down as of, as of now. So we want to take advantage of taking the $5 million that is available to us now.
I guess I'm confused as to the $5 million being available now and that not having been the total amount that we could have requested. I don't understand that.
We were made aware that there was some additional funding available to take advantage of and had internal conversations about what that number would realistically look like in terms of being able to do it in a way that would not create backlog, in a way that would make sure that we were being timely with those applications and not creating calls and backlogs. And so we decided to request $5 million with the understanding that after we had some time, we could go back and request more.
I see.
And we were not aware of the fact that that window closed.
All right. So at this moment in time, $5 million is the top?
Correct.
Okay. In the future, we can ask for more, right?
We are, I anticipate there might be an opportunity to ask for more. If the reality of the state and federal spend on ARPA 1 falls into ARPA 2, and that's still not spent, there may be another opportunity for us to get the same request from the state to draw down more money in the future.
I got you. Okay. All right. So in that case, I support the $5 million. That's the max, right? At this moment in time, that's the max. Knowing that we can go back, and then we've got our $10 million sitting on the side, waiting to help out as well, not knowing what the trajectory is going to be like here as we kind of roll out of COVID and people start going back to work and that kind of stuff. All right, I got it. Thank you. And again, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that you guys have done a really good job of this. We did, in the very beginning, go out to four different partners, I think it was, and it went okay. But JFS has taken this same process and really ramped it up and got that money out as quickly as possible. So I do want to say that thank you to you and your team. I know it's been a struggle. I know we've all got a lot of pressure in this space, trying to respond to people that are facing evictions. So I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, as we talk about whether or not these numbers will level down, from what Vice President Reese had mentioned, I would almost guarantee they are not going to level down because, as the different variables that you mentioned, but also because, as we were saying, a lot of people don't know about it, for whatever reason. So I just don't think it'll level down, but we'll do what we need to do. And I would say, rather than waiting to see if we can get more money that we communicate to the state, because as I was saying, they're going to disperse it all over for those who don't use it or don't use all of it or don't ask for it. And even though that's all we could ask for, there may be some areas in the state that didn't even ask for it. And so if that's a possibility, I think we should communicate now rather than later that we be interested in more, because it sounds like the majority of the board is saying, well, can we get more? So see who, who asked and who didn't, you know, because there's some money sitting on the table somewhere.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh huh. Can I just say, before, before you were Director, about this time last year, JFS did a presentation to us, and at that time, I think we, they were saying that we had $5 million, I guess we were getting out. And they, I remember it, because I wanted it erased from YouTube, because you'd ever want the federal government to feel like you don't need the money. And they said, well, we don't know if we're going to really need this money. Nobody's calling. And so that's when we came as a board and said, we going to advertise. So we started advertising. We had the bus out there. We had the cards. Madam President had the cards, the 513 relief cards. And I remember her talking about giving them out at the grocery store to people. And we were running out here with the bus, and Commissioner Drehouse, we're out here, and people were showing up. We killing ourselves to get the word out. And when we got the word out, we, now all of a sudden, now, we ain't got enough money. So what I'm trying to say is, we don't want to send a dime, because this is really money that's coming, it doesn't go back to the coffers, goes to another area. And the state has to get this money spent, or they got to turn it back to Washington, and it'll go to another state. What I'd like to happen, because I don't like to do, I'm not a rubber stamp type of person, and I know we all like to ask questions. Before you go and limit yourself at the state, I would hope our administrator, like we normally do, they meet with each of us and ask, hey, we looking at $5 million, but do y'all want 10? Here's the goes and cons. So that we have some ability, because we have to deal with the overall budget. And we don't want, the only thing that's funding these type of things is this levy. We want this other money. And I'm just concerned that you won't be able to go back to the state for this money, because the state is under the gun themselves. They got, the federal government is on them. That's why they said, let's open it up to counties who can do more. And if we don't spend it, it's going back to Washington, and I don't want it back to Washington. it's going back to Washington, and I don't want it back to Washington. I want it in the hands of the people. So in the future, please don't come with a limited thing unless we, especially if we got to vote on it. Now, if we ain't got to vote on it, then you ain't got to come to us. But don't come to us and say, here's five, five million, and I can get ten million, or I can get twenty million. At least let us have some say in what it is that we're hearing and what we think might happen and what we think might be the best thing to do. So that's why I'm, I'm a little disappointed. I'm happy with the work that you guys are doing. JFS is kicking butt and doing a great job at it in this area. But I think that there's, the need is really great, especially when you're paying utilities that are going up. And I bet you, if Amy Spiller was here from Duke Energy, because she keeps calling, saying that they, they don't want to cut people off, but they're going to cut them off. It's a lot of people getting ready to get cut off, and this pays for utilities. So I am disappointed in the five million dollar. Don't, don't shackle my hands. I want to get the most that we can get, and if we need to give it to somebody else to help or whatever, that's a different story. So I do want to, I do want to bring that up, and I think all of us are out here, we know that the need is great, and we're trying to find other funds so we don't put it on the backside of taxpayers. So just please keep that in mind. I think we've articulated that, and I would like to say that I would like to see a tweaking of the eligibility criteria.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, Senior Utility Assistance Pilot Program. Lisa Webb.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The county commissioners in the 2022 budget allocated one million, twenty-five thousand dollars on the senior services levy funding for a pilot program to adjust utilities and property maintenance for senior citizens, with twenty-five thousand dollars of that fund, that funding dedicated to grassroots outreach for this pilot period. What follows is an overview of the program that we've come up with, with county administration in partnership with Council on, Council on Aging, who are here as well, Suzanne Burke and Ken Wilson, as well as Sandra Mitchell with SOACT. For background, utility assistance that's available, as we've really, very recently just discussed, through several current existing programs, Duke Energy, JFS, MSD, as well as CAA. All of those programs have various qualifications to receive assistance, but none are available to seniors above 200% poverty. In some cases, it's 175%. They're further limited in that the seniors applying for assistance must be homeowners or utility customers. This leaves the gaps for seniors that are just above the income limits, as well as seniors that are living with family members, because their family member is the homeowner. In many of those situations, that family member would not be a senior, and therefore they'd be ruled ineligible for several programs. The home repairs are also available through existing programs, but not for seniors in that 200, 300% poverty level, and in the case of the Council on Aging's current program with the elderly services program provided by the levy. Those seniors must suffer from a physical impairment before those repairs are covered through the levy program. What we're recommending is the creation of a pilot program that will fill this unmet need, really for seniors that aren't qualifying for the other programs that are out there in the county, such as the program that was just presented on. The Council on Aging of Southwest Ohio runs Hamilton County's elderly services program, as well as many other state and federal programs to help seniors remain independent and stay in their homes as long as possible. They already have programs providing these services, promoting independence, dignity, health, and safety for seniors, and they have volunteered to partner on this pilot. Council on Aging is in a unique position because they do have the infrastructure, and they are active as the local, really one stop for seniors to contact who need assistance, to be able to collect information on those seniors and point them in the right direction of programs that they do qualify for already, as well as this program if they don't qualify for others. The 2022 poverty guidelines, just as a rough estimate of the eligibility requirements for this program, as you see, say you had two seniors living on their, living together in their home, the max qualification for this program would be just under fifty-five thousand dollars in income a year, which is higher than a lot of other programs. If you look at 200% of poverty, it's just under that thirty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-dollar amount, increasing the amount of seniors that would be eligible, and again, allowing eligibility for seniors that are living potentially with caregivers or other family members to qualify. As far as outreach and marketing, the budget also includes the twenty-five thousand dollars for grassroots outreach that we mentioned. Council on Aging has an outreach bureau, which will assist in that effort, as well as reaching out to SOACT, serving older adults through changing times, to provide on-the-ground grassroots outreach efforts in the community to try to get more senior, as many seniors as possible that are eligible to get into this program. Additionally, the county will provide marketing assistance from our current partners. The next steps for this program would be amending the current contract that the county has with Council on Aging for the senior services levy program. Right now, what we'd be looking at is a one-time utility assistance payment of five hundred, of five hundred dollars up to, and home, home modifications for Hamilton County residents as well. And then outreach services provided by the local organization, which has already been identified. The contract with that amendment in it has gone to the prosecutor's office for their review. Our hope is that we can get that back by the end of March, get that amendment approved by the commissioners, and get the program started by Council on Aging. They've assured us, given their infrastructure, they're going to be able to load that pretty quickly and get the program started and out to citizens in April. If there are any questions, as I said, I've got Council on Aging here as well as SOACT.
Why don't we have Council on Aging come up and speak? They'd like to say a few, few words.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Welcome.
Suzanne Burke from Council on Aging, joined by Ken Wilson.
Okay, welcome.
So we're looking forward to the prospect of this important program. And as Lisa said, we are in a position to do pretty quick screening, as we are already do eligibility screening, with the goal of making sure we're maximizing federal and state revenue, and then ultimately, for those individuals who don't qualify for any programs under federal and state revenue, they would default to the local revenue. So we have those systems in place. It's actually very timely, because we are currently during, doing some screening for Duke Energy. And so we'll just increase our in-house screening with the new guidelines and feel like we'll be able, as Lisa said, to hit the ground running April and start getting those funds out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have something you'd like to say also?
Well, the only other thing I'd add is that I think this, this program is timely, because utility bills are increasing, and we think that's going to continue. And seniors living on a fixed income, this becomes a hardship. So we're grateful to the county for considering this program.
Okay. Thank you. Sandra, did you want to make, did you have any comments?
Good afternoon, Madam President. How you doing today?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hi. Yes, this is a great opportunity. I'm a true advocate for our seniors, and I strongly believe in order for them to remain in a home, we're going to have to help them. Just got a call today from a young lady that's taking care of her aging parents, and she asks if I can enlarge their bathroom. I can't wait to, to get back with her, because I'm sure that's an issue for a lot of our seniors that are perhaps using mobile devices to get around, wheelchairs and walkers. So I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversation with Council on Aging and working out a detail and a contract on how best we can serve and work together. And it should be exciting. And so I'm, SOACT is celebrating 30 years this year. So we've been at this for 30 years without any levy dollars. And God, maybe that's a, put out there in the atmosphere there. But also to help our seniors age in place, that is just so important to me. It's so, we got to do it. I mean, a lot of those seniors have retired from the city jobs, the county jobs, and they don't have funds. If they go into a nursing home, the average spending is going to pick up about maybe a year or two to deplete their fundings, their savings. It is costly. It's cheaper to keep them in their homes. So whatever we can do as a county, as a city, as a state, I think we need to make sure that that happens, and I'm willing to help.
Okay. Thank you so much. Lisa, maybe you could answer the question for me. As we look at the, the program would be for seniors with an income 200 to 300% of the poverty level. I guess I always think about those who fall in the gap, who maybe they make a little bit more than this. How can we help those people by even maybe just giving an incentive for them doing something different? Because aesthetically, we want things to be better. We want all our seniors to be, to have a benefit of this. And I'm just wondering, what do we do for the ones who fall in the gap?
I would start by saying that in working with Council on Aging, we identified that this is the real gap, and these are the people that they struggle with, that they're not able to provide assistance to, because they're not qualifying for the other programs. So our hope is, and actually what I came up here for, is that this is a pilot project. We are not quite sure where, where the gaps are, what people really need. We know we have this funding, we want to get it out quickly.
Absolutely.
Our hope is that over the next couple of months, we can look at this and use Council on Aging's data to track who the people are that need the service and where the gaps are, what we're filling. And if we need to tweak the program and change it, we will have the opportunities to do that and get back to the commissioners with real data to back that up. If we find that that home modification issue really is the gap, maybe we look at shifting dollars more towards that than to the utility programs, because there are other things out there at this point. But we can make those changes and evolve as the program continues. I think the goal, when the commissioners approve this in the budget, was that we would look at this as a pilot for the next few months and use it as we look at the senior services levy, which is currently under review for the November election. And if we want to make recommendations for funding within that levy's capacity for this program, then we'll have some real data to back it up.
Okay, thanks. And I see the line is April, but how long is the pilot?
We have a million dollars to spend. We'll sort of see how long it takes and how quickly that works. And if Council on Aging is reaching out to us in the summer and saying we need, we'll come back to the commissioners.
Okay.
But the goal is to get it, the goal is not for this to be remaining and stretch it out as long as possible. The goal is to get that money and that help into the seniors.
Yeah, thanks. Vice President Reese.
That was a question I was going to ask about the, the 200 to 300%, but it's good to, to see what the pilot is, is good for a pilot. The other thing, I guess I want to make sure, maybe our administrator may jump in on this, because I, I do get a lot of, you know, seniors who, and this, I want to, first of all, say this came from the seniors. And I want to thank those seniors that came down. We were getting ready to vote on our budget, they testified, talked to each of us. So I want to thank them for coming and standing up. And when we were out with the 513 relief bus, one of the things I heard from a lot of people, we had to turn away seniors. And it was kind of like, oh my God, they're standing on a walker, they're on a cane, they're in a wheelchair, they got all the way up here, and we don't have anything, because they received their social security check, even though everything else kept going up.
Right.
And so federal guidelines prohibit them from getting all of the, the things that others were able to get. And that really, really hurt me. And I said, gosh, what can we do? So this is great to have this pilot, but there are people who need, the furnaces are going out, they're, you know, we're getting ready to go into the, the hot season, air conditioning, those kind of things. And I was trying to see, maybe it's not from this million dollars, but are there other things, I thought, planning, because I know I was at a basketball game, and someone saw me and said, hold on, hold for my grandmother. And I was like, huh? And she said, my, I'm out, my boiler don't went out. I'm like, okay. But we were able to get it to the administrator, we got it to a planning. So I just want to, somehow, if that's still available, I know we used to do PWC, we're not doing that anymore, but that's still somehow available, and how do we?
Yeah, we, Madam President, Madam Vice President, we do have a, a utility assistance program that goes out that helps people with the replacement of air conditioning, air conditioning units, heating units, et cetera. So we can certainly make sure that that information is meshed into this program, so that the folks who are answering the phone for this program have that information and can direct people accordingly.
Good. And when we, I know we got to vote on it and everything, but when we roll it out, I think we need to make sure on our webpage, 513 Relief, we've got our senior program, but then, like you said, have that as, you know, even though the million dollars, we got something else paying for that, but have that listed.
Absolutely.
So that they can call that number, then you can have a person that you connect them with here and not say, oh, well, just hang up and call, you know, the front desk. There's a number to navigate that. So it's kind of like a senior embusman type of operation, because I think that's also half about it. It's just like, where do I go? And I don't want 15 different places to call or tell me to get online and try to figure that out. The other thing is in terms of our marketing, I know we'll have, in your proposal, you have SOACT and some of the other channels. I know Council on Aging, here's some commercials that you have, and maybe, hopefully, this could be tagged on there so that we could and give us also the number. So our offices, if someone called, we got that one number to give them, or whoever that person is. But I want to really cut down the navigation of trying to figure it out, that we can promote, is call this number, the county, you know, call this number, they'll get Council on Aging, but call this number, and we can all promote. But other than that, I, I think this is great for the pilot. I think this is a timely, great partners, and I'm just looking forward to us announcing this program for our senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation and to those here to testify. So I was going to ask about the interface between the CDBG dollars that are meant to be for home improvements, or, you know, furnaces going out or whatever, for seniors, and how this interfaces with that. And so are there different eligibility criteria here related to this one as opposed to CDBG?
I'm not exactly sure if the eligibility criteria are, are different from this. This one goes up to 3%, 300%. Many of our other low mod income go up to 200% of poverty level. So we can check on that and let the board know what the distinction is there.
Okay. Yeah, and I, because I, too, and, you know, we've, we've got a program over on the CDBG side, so this is in addition to that. So I just want to better understand the distinctions, so that when folks call and for assistance, I will know where to send them.
Yes.
You know, and, and COA has always been a great partner, as has, have the folks in planning and development. So, yeah, I'm excited to get this, this money out the door, I think, with spring eventually coming. We'll probably have some need for these dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. And Suzanne, are you retiring or something?
I'm not.
Are you retiring?
No.
Oh, I keep.
Sounds good.
I keep trying to retire everybody, don't I?
Sounds good, but no.
Okay, okay.
I'm here for a while.
Maybe that was Bethany House or something.
Oh, it is Bethany House.
It's Bethany House. I knew I was in the ballpark.
Yeah, yeah. Not me yet.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good idea, though.
Yeah, but, but thank you so much for all that Council on Aging did during the pandemic and all those great meals and service. And so we just all thank you for that.
Thank you for all your support. We're here to serve seniors, and we appreciate the county's love for seniors, too, so.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, we'll be looking forward to passing this. Yes, Ms. Graves.
It's my pleasure to be here today on behalf of the senior community, and that I've served for 30 years. And I would just have to say, as a.
Get into that microphone.
Hear me? Okay, just as a position of support, that the need is beyond need. It's moving into desperation at this point. And while I'm working very hard in terms of financial literacy for seniors, and the radio show and television, all that, to get that word out, I, any monies that can be appropriated to assist SOACT in targeting African-American seniors, because there is a breakdown. And I don't wish to step politically on anyone. I'm just simply saying that if we can streamline this process and leverage the, the, the resources that have been out here for so long, that have had to struggle with very little help, if we can begin to reverse that and begin to leverage those resources, I would be deeply appreciated, appreciate this. And I don't just speak for myself. I speak for so many other people who have been in the trenches for a long, long time, for African-American and other minority people in our community. We must do better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know, Ms. Graves, that you were here to speak, or.
I was.
Okay, because, yeah, okay, well, I'm glad you did, and it's good to see you. Yeah, okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to passing that legislative. Look forward to passing that legislature. Okay. We'll move on, but I did want to make a comment that today is International Women's Day, and I certainly wanted to say just a little bit about that. It's a global day celebrating the socioeconomic, cultural, and political achievements of women. The day also marks a call to action for accelerating gender parity. Significant activity is witnessed worldwide as groups come together to celebrate women's achievements or rally for women's equality. It's marked annually on March the 8th. International Women's Day is one of the most important days of the year to celebrate women's achievements, raise awareness about equality, lobby for accelerated gender parity, and, well, fund, is it, fundraise for female-focused charities. But International Day was in existence since 1911, the first gathering was held. The colors for International Women's Day, purple, green, and white. The green symbolizes hope, white represents purity, albeit a controversial concept. The colors originated from the Women's Social and Political Union in UK in 1908. So, everybody's coming up with a day for something, and I didn't know about this, this has been going on every year, so I just wanted to acknowledge International Women's Day. Okay. So, let's move on to our next item on the agenda. We have two executive sessions. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22-G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney for the public body concerning MSD. And item number five, make a motion for executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code pursuant to 121.22-G1 to consider the compensation of a public employee. Second.
Commissioner Sumer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.